Do you have any follow up? We thank you for this day and the city in which we live. Guide us this afternoon as we make any decisions. Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, this is a work session, Nunnan City Council. Let me say upfront, this is not a public hearing. There'll be no opportunity for the public to speak at today's hearing. This is a work session for the benefit and solely for the benefit of the Nunnan City Council. The work session today is a rezoning request, RZ 2025-07 by Stephen L. Jones, Attorney at Law on behalf of Bright Sky Residential LLC for 20.73 acres located at 459 Jefferson Street, Tax Parcel in 57C 003 from CGN, General Commercial, to RMH, Residential Multi-Family Dwelling, Higher Density District for the purpose of developing 140 townhouse-style attached condominium dwelling units. And Mr. Cole, how are you today?
I'm doing great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. Before yours requests, as the mayor said, by Stephen L. Jones, Attorney at Law on behalf of Bright Sky Residential, to rezone 20.73 plus or minus acres, as you see on the map there, at 459 Jefferson Street. This is a request to rezone from General Commercial, CGN, to RMH, Residential Multiple Family Dwelling, High Density. And he wants to, the developer wants to develop 140 townhouse-style attached condo units. And here we see a layout, and I'll go into some of the details. Per this concept plan, the development will consist of 26 units in duplexes and 114 units in triplexes. The 114 triplex units will contain 1,525 square feet, three bedrooms, and 2.5 baths with a two-car garage and driveway. The 26 duplex units will contain 1,665 square feet, four bedrooms, 2.5 baths with a two-car garage and driveway. All the units will be rental with rates ranging between $22.50 and $24.50 per month. The concept plan shows a proposed site density of 6.75 units per acre. And now just to go through the remaining slides to give you a feel for it. You see on the south side there, of course, this borders Bullsbury on the south, Jefferson Street on the north. And I'll go into some more details in a second about the access points, but there's no access off of Bullsbury where you see more of the environmental areas. And of course, we have some facades here. You'll see, as labeled on the top right, the triplex design. The duplex design is this one. And here are some representative photos the applicant provided. Interiors. Some more interiors. And of course, he's been working with Mike Forbusch, our beautification director, on the tree management plan. The applicant will have to provide amenities because the proposal contains more than 50 units. The proposed development will also utilize private roads. And as I mentioned, there's no access off Bullsbury Drive and two points of access off of Jefferson Street. And finally, the planning commission held a public hearing in October and voted for recommend denial of the request by three, oh, and one vote. And Mr. Mayor, the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Cole? All right. Any questions of the applicant?
For the sake of clarity, I want to, I'll show my ignorance here, which is not unusual for me. But anyway, that being said, the condominium dwelling units, these are rental units, right?
That's correct.
My understanding, in my experience, condominium is ownership. Am I misinterpreting that?
No, I think typically through the years we've seen-
Is that just a way of his language, or what?
You're not misinterpreting that based on our history in particular. And I think, and even you can clarify this later on, I think they could sell these in the future per the Georgia law and our ordinances, but this initial concept is for rental only.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, if you'll come forward and identify yourself, please, because I-
Thank you, Mayor.
I do have a follow-up on that question. Define then, I was going to say something, but I'm not going to. Define his, he's confused about that, and so am I. So in our world, he was, a condominium is ownership of, you don't own the land, you own the, so why is this called condominium? Or is this something that's just, just, talk to us about that?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. So from a plating perspective, the way that this is going to be developed is not as individual tax parcels. It's going to be one large tax parcel. But from an individual plating perspective, in the future, if it were to be a single family or a single owner of each individual dwelling, they would be individual condominiums. And so, like, you'll often see that with townhomes where it is technically under a condominium regime instead of like a platted regime where you have a condominium plat versus a typical subdivision plat. So you would own the individual structure itself and not the dirt outside of it. For instance, I think we did that on the Temple Avenue development. That was a condominium regime from the subdivision standpoint. It's not a land subdivision, but when you're talking about the underlying individual ownership, it's a condominium plat instead of a subdivision plat.
So the owner of the land- Time they just start to develop, they, or they go vertical, will be the same owner of the land and the streets, you're talking about private roads, for forever. I mean, if they sell it, they're just going to sell the land and the improvements as a separate.
The intent of Bright Sky is to own this development into perpetuity.
Yeah.
However, to future-proof it, what we would probably do is do a condominium plat so that if the market called for these to be owner-occupied, then you could have individual owners buy the individual units, put a condominium association that is in control of all the private streets and all the private walkways.
So I have a question. So if the market calls-
For it, I mean, wouldn't it be safe to say that the market actually is calling for single-family, be simple ownership?
There, yes, you could say that, but there's also a market demand for the Bright Sky product. What we see is you've got multiple levels of step up in dwellings right now. So where people want to, typically, you might, you might start in an apartment, and then you would move to a home, and you might live there forever. We're seeing multiple phases now where you might start in an apartment, then you want to move to a single-family home such as this that is a rental, so you can get more of the things that you get in a attached product with a little bit of a yard, amenities, more walkability. Then you might step up into a single-family detached, which is either for rent or buy. And then you might move up into a different product. We're seeing in the market with home buyers, just the way the interest rates are, the market are, incomes and home prices, that there are more phases to the process and dwellings, you know, living spaces as you move through the cycle. So this is another step in that cycle that we don't see. In Bright Sky, I've got a presentation, Ms. Shea, if you wouldn't mind pulling that up, that I think will show you kind of some of the amenities this offers and how this is a different product than a typical apartment and provides that maybe second step before you get into the homeownership phase. So if you, if we can look here at the concept plan, I got clicker delay. As Mr. Cole said, we're only accessing off Jefferson Street. You'll see here wetlands and stream courses on the south side that prevent, from a practical standpoint, access on Bullsbury. That's actually a unique site feature that makes this property not prime for commercial development, consistent with other things that front on Bullsbury, which is why we think that the property is ripe for residential, consistent with more of what is along Jefferson Street. Here is Mr. Haponski's, goodness, color, black and white plan. Here's a color rendering of his plan. You can see they are broken out into double-attached, I don't like the word duplex, and triple-attached products. We've got 26 of the double-attached, 114 of the triple-attached, and they are broken out into various plans. So on the interiors, on the triplex, you've got three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath. On the duplex, you've got four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath. Gosh, I swear I'm only hitting it once. Ms. Shea, could you help me? I think the clicker battery's going bad. Could we go back to the, keep coming back one. Let's go to the next one. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Oh, forward, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I just said back, so I'm on the other way.
Right there, back one. So here you'll see, these are renderings of the various products. At the bottom is the triple-attached product, at the top is the double-attached product. These are all rear-entry products, so they all front on common walkways or common space. These are private roads. One of the reasons for the private roads, and Mayor and Councilman, to your point, for the condominium regime style, is so that we could have more flexibility in the design and provide rear-entry product with these walkways, which I'll get to in a minute. Next slide, please. So here you'll see these dark blue showing black on the screen lines. These are all internal walkways on which the dwellings front. Again, all these streets provide for rear access. And you could see in the bottom of the screen one picture that shows kind of you've got a, a common green space where the front door faces with the garage to the rear in either a private alley or a private main street. Next slide, please. Here's some other examples of those internal walkways. So you'll see here the front of the dwellings, instead of coming down a street to the front door, you're coming down an internal walkway with a gated front yard, you know, if you have a dog or some other pet, or you can congregate with friends in the front. And then that provides for a sense of community as well as easier access to walk in, access some of the common areas and the amenities, which I'll overview in a second. Next slide, please. So to that alley and street network, that dark yellow line you see on the plan, those are the main streets, the thinner yellow lines, those are the alleyways feeding the rear-entry garages. Next slide, please. Here you'll see we've scattered throughout the development various open areas and amenities. That large circle, next slide, please, is the common amenity area. This is a clubhouse resort-style pool, and then beside it is racket sport courts. Probably end up going with like a pickleball, but we've got the option to flex here. Next slide, please. Here's the interior of the clubhouse. This is an example of a clubhouse product. It's obviously not a rendering, but Bright Sky has built communities throughout the country. And so this is one example of one of those interior clubhouses. It's sort of typical of what you'd see for a clubhouse area. Next slide, please. To the north along Jefferson, we have a gated dog park area. That's all the way to the northeast of the site. Next slide, please. And then on the west side of the site, we have these various pocket parks. As you can see in the excerpt rendering, those dwellings facing that common space. So the front doors here are facing those, that pocket park. Next slide, please. If you'll press play for me, if you click once, I think it'll. So this is a video walkthrough. This is, this is coming east on Jefferson, turning into the development. This is the main entrance. If you came down here and took a left, you would enter in, you would head towards the second exit on Jefferson. You can see that boulevard-style entrance that we're planning against. This is the primary entrance on Jefferson. You terminate into that main drive and the amenity area. You can see that clubhouse. We went through interior pictures of other ones previously. Tried to trim, there's a lot of views of the clubhouse, I'm not sure why. But you can see the pickleball, racket sport court to the right. We're now heading north towards the second access on Jefferson, turning around, seeing the other view of the clubhouse. Now you have an aerial, this is a really cool shot. You can see the racket court, resort-style pool, and you can see where the front of the homes face that interior walkway and the common amenity. The real social folks will want to live right next to the amenity. Another view, and we could look at a still of this. This is one of the pocket parks. You can see again the interior, these homes facing the pocket park, the central greenways and the central walkways. Looking across, you can see another walkway. Here you see one of those rear-fed alleys. These are the back doors in the rear of the homes, which, you know, we think is a nice touch to keep the inside into the cars or whatever else, like you back there on the view. Here you have a central walkway. We looked at some stills of this earlier. This is heading north on that main drag. You can see, again, those pocket parks along the way where the homes front. Next slide, please. Coming back to the renderings, this will give you a full facade view, all sides of the triple-attached product. Again, you can see the rear where the garages are, the fronts, and then the sides. Next slide, we'll come to the floor plan. So all have two-car garage, all will have two-car parking as well in the driveway. Outside of that, we have additional off-site parking. We have 55 head-in spaces as well. So combine that with 280 garage spaces and 280 driveway spaces. We've got 615 for ample parking, and those head-in spaces are throughout the development too for guest and overflow parking. One thing that, as we'll get into some of the interiors on the Bright Sky product, these are highly appointed units. So you have full hardy on the outside, quartz countertops, soft closed cabinets, mow-in fixtures, stainless steel appliance, level-five LVTP flooring, which is the highest grade, my understanding. Next slide, please. Then we'll get to the double-attached product here. These have side entry doors on the side facade as well as the front door that you'll see at the top left-hand corner, and of course, the rear entry at the bottom right. Next slide, please. This is the floor plan for that. Again, same appointments in this product as well, all high-end finishes, two-car garage as well. Next slide, please. These are examples of other Bright Sky products. If we could take a minute and talk again about the renderings outside, this, the product that you saw was a product that Bright Sky designed specifically for Nunnan. They went around and looked at various custom homebuilders and semi-custom homebuilders and the products they were building and tried to mirror them after that. But this is the example of an interior of a couple Bright Sky products that are on the ground. This is the great room. Next slide, please. These are, again, these are bathrooms, again, high-end fixtures throughout, double vanity. Next slide, please. Examples of bathrooms, of custom closets, you know, you don't have the metal rack, right? Next slide, please. Again, more great rooms. These are examples of, of other great rooms and different products. Next slide, please. And then, just want to look at this in the context of some other rental-type dwellings in the area if we're looking on Jefferson. You can see contiguous with this property to the north, there's true multifamily. To the west, there's some other true multifamily. And then if we go further west, there's another attached rental product on the ground under development, I believe, there as well. So generally, there's a market trend towards that product, and you've got the ability to, without leaving the same area, do that transition through the phase from the apartment living to the attached, single-family rental. And then you can, as you progress through the cycle, maybe move up into first-time buyer attached or detached product. With that, Mayor, Council, if you have any questions about what we've been through on this, we'd be happy to answer those.
Anyone have any questions?
I heard you say that there are some topography and wetland issues as to why it's not connected to Bullsbury. But I'm looking here, and I'm like, is there really an opportunity here to at least connect between Bullsbury and Jefferson for better connection, traffic flow, all of those different things?
Certainly. I'm accompanied by Mike Haponski. Mike, do you want to talk about the feasibility of connecting?
You need to come to the mic.
And introduce yourself, please, even though- Good afternoon, Mike Haponski. I'm with Ridge Playing Engineering. I'm actually a Nunnan resident myself, so I've been here once or twice before. So to address your question, yes, there is a rather, it's actually, it's a flood, it's not a flood plain, it's a floodway, which is federally regulated, heavily federally regulated. So it extends across the entire frontage. There are wetlands associated with that flood point, floodway, I'm sorry, as well as state water. So to cross over to Bullsbury, that opportunity was probably lost with the development of the very corner piece that's right next to it. There was possibility, maybe, kind of, sort of, years ago to connect through there, but now that that's been developed, there is, unless, you would go through the federal permitting, and that, that could take years, depending on what, what was going on at that level. So I do not believe that it is very feasible to go directly to Bullsbury. Unfortunately.
Anyone else?
I've got a couple of questions. It looks like you have-
Plenty of parking, which I, you know, applaud you on that. The parking width of your garage, because it looked like a very narrow apartment unit in each one of those tri, duplex and triplexes. How wide is the actual garage space? Because most garage spaces are advertised as a two-car, but it's really a car and a half.
I do not have that information.
Is usable as two cars?
Understood. I don't have that information with me. Stephen May, I just, I'm not familiar with the architecture.
Anyway, that's always a concern because, you know, we advertise, you know, advertise two-car garage, but is it really two cars? Certainly. These are, I think, I believe, 22-foot-wide products, so that's, should be wide enough for two cars. Put spice then, roughly. Correct. Okay. And then I just want to make sure, since this is an entirely rental community, all common areas, so basically anything, anything outside of the house footprint is maintained by the rental agent, property manager, whatever? That's correct. So Bright Sky will own this entire parcel, and will take care of all common area maintenance, as well as all maintenance of the interior of the dwellings and the exterior of the dwellings and the amenities, grass cutting, the whole kit and caboodle. Roads and alleys and everything. This is maintenance-free living.
Anyone else?
Just another, maybe it's more of a comment, but we're going through your slides. I'm looking through on page four of your, of this report. SNAP suggests as conditions to be considered. And you were making a point to show us how quaint the backyards were with the fence, et cetera. Is that an actual rendering? Because I think, I believe they're saying that there should be close to proximity to the actual rendering. Is that just a bunch of pretty pictures, or is this is really what it's going to look like?
No. Yes. Those renderings, that was actually an applicant-proffered condition that we would abide by what we submitted. Bright Sky designed these facade renderings and floor plans to match what they felt they saw in the shrouding market for home builders.
And one other thing to follow up on Dustin's comment regarding the parking. So I live in, in that type of neighborhood, and I think we addressed that issue with one of your other projects on, on the bypass, about the, not only the width, but the depth of it, because you have wide enough for two cars, and you have the depth for two cars. But the concern is in those type of alleyways, is the reality of people who actually only have two cars and families that live in those. What is the, I know you had some outside parking, but what is the provision for those people who have, you know, basically three and four people living in those places with three and four vehicles? That creates congestion and just parking everywhere that you could find a spot. So I'm sure you guys took all that into consideration, but I would like to hear what you have to say about it.
Absolutely. Councilman, so we have the opportunity to park four cars per dwelling, two in the garage and two in the driveway. And then throughout, Ms. Shea, if you wouldn't mind coming back, there's a, on slide two, there's the site plan. So in addition to the four cars per dwelling in front of the dwelling, we have another 19 plus 17 at, next slide, please. Keep coming. There we go. So you can see here in front of the amenity area, there's 36 parking spaces. And then to the, on the south side of the development, again, on that main street all the way to the west side, there's another 20 parking spaces. So that's, that's designed to provide additional off-site overflow parking.
About the people who actually live there, and they're not going to be parking in that overflow parking, or maybe they would, but I don't see people that walk from the parking in front of the clubhouse to the back units that for overflow parking. That's what I'm trying to get you to address. Because it may be different if in front of each of the units, for example, that you had additional parking for the units, but there isn't any. And having experienced that, I just go- And having experienced that, I just go, that's always a concern when you get into, and particularly you would be your concern, when you're having a condominium association, basically, in townhouses. Parking is always a, an issue, and how do you plan to, maybe I'm making more of it than what it is, but I mean...
No, absolutely.
From a, from a marketing standpoint, what are you doing about that?
Certainly. Uh, well, I, you know, we, I think Bright Sky feels that the two in the garage and the two in the driveway would be ample for the residents that live in each unit. Uh, but just to go above and beyond, that's why they addressed the additional guest parking. Does your concern, just to be clear, that you might have more than four cars per dwelling?
Well, in reality, most people don't use their garage to park it. It's, it's about storage, you know, I mean, tru, truly. Um, so I just maybe look at, you know, two and a half perhaps, uh, that's what I'm, that's just, it's my observation, so. And I, I understand that it's, it's your product, but, uh, anytime that you run into that, and certainly you're maintaining it, you're just gonna have some parking issues typically.
Yeah, absolutely.
My experience.
And there may be some leasing provisions that we can include to make sure of the parking remains viable and the garages remain open for parking. That's something we'll talk to Bright Sky about.
At this point, there won't be any prohibitions for parking two cars in the driveway, though.
There will not, no.
So you're counting on four, basically four spots per rent unit?
Correct.
Kind of looking at the numbers there, and if people have two cars, I'm looking at the trip generation, going, you know, all this traffic spilling out onto Jackson, okay? Because it's only, only accessible to Jackson. Jefferson, I'm sorry, Jefferson, you're correct, thank you. That's still considered a primary feed or some, some term like that? That's a fairly small road when you, you know, look at it and the number of cars generated. Anyway, that's a little bit of a concern to me, because, I mean, what, during the total of, was that a thousand sixteen daily? Five hundred in, five hundred eight in, five hundred eight out, um, daily? Just with the traffic and the congestion, especially in that section of, of the roadway. So is there any, have you actually been out there on Jefferson during those, you know, peak times to see what traffic flow is?
Yeah, absolutely, and it, we're happy to address that too as we get into permitting with Mr. Kalar. Um, I believe that there's a memo attached in the applicant, in the application or in the agenda packet from him, or addressed in the staff report, where he's looked at some of those issues.
Sorry, if anybody else has any questions, I, I was looking at some of your requested variances. Let me get back to that page. You were requesting, I think, three of them, three or four, uh, you're gonna request some variances?
That's correct.
I was looking at, when you look at some of these, you're requesting a setback, I think on Jefferson to be pretty close to the road, again, being a thoroughfare and adding more traffic to it, some of those, those units right along Jefferson, especially right there by that, uh, the second, the, the secondary entrance, seem to be very close, um, to the, to the road and just noise. What's your, what are your noise? Because it doesn't look like there's any room for any plantings or, um, noise mitigations.
For plantings, we've submitted, um, a beefed-up preliminary tree management plan, I believe includes plantings along Jefferson. With respect to the setbacks, this is technically a major street, and that's why I believe you have the, um, heightened setbacks. One thing that we've looked at is that these are technically rear-entry dwellings, and so that arguably reduces, staff is taking the position, and, and we don't disagree with them, but that the major street setbacks apply. However, if this were interpreted as a rear-entry product, you would have reduced setbacks of ten feet and thirty-five feet.
And then the second one, you're requesting a twenty-foot proposed minimum building line width instead of the required twenty-six. I live in a long, narrow house. It makes living difficult. Um, twenty foot is not a very wide house at all. It's kind of, I guess, planning on, you know, looking at the pictures of a very, kind of more of an open floor plan.
Uh, this is a step in the buying phase, right? So we view this as the move-up from apartment living or a transient, um, you know, traveling nurse or something like that. And so, uh, the design of the product is meant to accommodate, you know, a certain, buyer or renter, right? This isn't, this might not be a forever home. And so, in terms of your point of having compact living, um, you know, it's, it's a certain renter that might rent here, someone who is looking for this type of product.
Okay. And then my other question was, and I know, you know, our staff has looked at it, but the, the sides that face the parking lots, the commercial areas, there's, it doesn't look like there's much room at all for plantings, you know, visual mitigations, looking at a parking lot and the backside of a building. What's the plan there?
We've, there's actually a staff-recommended condition that, uh, will comply with the landscaping ordinance to ensure that there are the adequate plantings on all sides. Mondo, the landscape architect for the project, has submitted to Mr. Furbush a, I guess I call it a Phase Two preliminary tree management plan to show that we believe that we can comply with the requirements of the landscaping ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at, I think it's page twenty, it looks like page twenty-seven that I'm looking at, and it just looks kind of sparse. And I would assume that the Bright Sky would be, you know, again, responsible for lawns and leaves and, you know, and we're getting to that time of the year now when, you know, everything is, the trees are denuded and it's, it's bare. And so, there's not a whole lot there to, you know, visually appealing.
Certainly, and this twenty-seven isn't the full, what you're looking on page twenty-seven of the application, or the agenda packet, is not the, um, preliminary tree management plan or the, what I would call the Phase Two preliminary tree management plan. That was a separate submittal. Uh, I don't believe it's in this part of the application package or in this part of the agenda package, but that was submitted at the request of Mr. Furbush and has been reviewed. Uh, and with that, there's also the other staff-recommended condition that this comply with, or that the concept plan and the approval shall not alleviate compliance with the city's landscaping ordinance.
Your setbacks that you're asking for, if those were not, um, granted and you had to live up to what the requirements are, how many units would you have?
Uh, Councilwoman, I, that's not, I couldn't answer that because we haven't done a concept plan based on that. What we did was look at this and interpret it based on what we thought was the applicable setback, which was the rear-entry garage setback. So, but from here, I think you would, at least you lose all the, um, units that touch But without having Mr. Kepanski, Mr. Kepanski draw it, I don't wanna commit to a number.
And I'm also, like, you know, if you look at the amenity, I'm sitting in the pool, enjoying a pool, a cold one, you know, or something like that, a cold Coca-Cola, and I'm sitting there looking at the backside of a parking lot again, you know, potentially.
That's certainly something we could look at, and what I'll do in advance to the council public hearing is get you a full picture of what that exterior buffer landscaping will look like, including what the landscape architect's already put together.
And I'd like to know where it is.
Certainly. He's on it.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. We appreciate, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Councilman.
Appreciate you being here today. Uh, so ends our work session, uh, for this agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in second to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose light sign. We're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.